Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with Alodim Morse Predium, Antay, Colorado. The acronym is ANPAC. I am the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class Forty-Five, Class Forty-Five. What did we learn in Class Forty-Four? Well, we were still talking about the French Protectorate of 1913, right? And as we're starting to read this, and it's starting to disclose two main factors of what's going on, two main factors. The first fact is that France and the United States of America are what you call ratified, deposited states on the record. They have a constitution, flag, seal. They have their permanent territory, they have their population, they have their laws. So the United States of America that's on the record proper is being a party to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship is a state. France is a state. So you got two states now talking about what? Moroccan treaties. But what gave them their sovereign right to talk about the treaties? It's because they have constitutions. That's what gives them their sovereign rights to talk about treaties. They deposited the treaties. Now they can now enforce said treaties. What's the second thing that's happening through the French Protectorate? Moors have been ran out of government. So now moors have been branded as proteges and subjects in their own homeland called Morocco. So therefore, in the meantime, under what's called capitulations and a protectorate status, the cause are now fighting over the moors. Why are they fighting over the moors? Because the moors are the true asset. America was protecting the asset. Now France is coming in under what's called what? Protectorate and protecting the asset. So why are they calling it the protectorate? Because France is now taking over the asset. They want to protect the asset. Everybody wants to protect the asset. That's what moors gotta take away from this. We're the asset. But we have to recognize ourselves as Islam, Aysef law and master, master of one. Understand exactly who you are and your obligations to yourself. And the first thing you do after you find out your nationality, now you must now choose between the entire laws of the empire. So when moors check the box nationality, what should you be doing next? You should be now trying to rein in the order of constitutions. Because after 1880, that was the first time on the record that the colonies admitted on the record through a treaty that the moors have been conquered. That's why it's called the protectorate treaty protectorate. Eighteen eighty, Treaty of Madrid. It's a protectorate treaty moors. Moors went from being moors for governments to now being ran out of governments, and now you're the protected party, party. What does that mean? You're the asset. What does that mean? The asset is you, because there is no treaty without the moor. You are the asset. So moors have to understand, you have to understand, who are the contracting parties? The contracting parties are moors and Americans. It's that simple. Not Moorish Americans. Moors have branded themselves as Moorish Americans. What's happening? We as moors have to get back to scholarship instead of followership. We have to understand that we have an obligation. Once we check the box, have our nationality, once you put on a fad and a turban, you have an obligation according to the Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, to choose. It's either Morocco or America. It tells you in the treaty. But you can't choose both. What is that called? An Nazi model. That's a contradiction to your own Moorish treaty. And guess what? The colonies are ruling us with our own Moroccan laws. They're getting rich off our own Moroccan laws all because of what? Moors have yet to figure out who the contracting parties are. And the contracting parties are not Moorish Americans. Moorish Americans are third-party interlopers according to international law, because there are no Moorish Americans in the treaty. So you can't enforce a contract if your name's not in the contract. And according to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, it is just a moor. They refer to you as being Moorish. They refer to you being Moroccan in Morocco. Then they branded you as protege and what? Subject, only because they ran you out of government. That's the only reason. We can stand here and talk about all the treaties. Seventeen eighty-seven, eighteen thirty-six, eighteen eighty, nineteen oh six. We can talk about the treaties of Tripoli, Tunisia, Algiers, Algeria. We can talk about it. They never refer to moors as being Moorish Americans. So where did Moorish Americans get this term from? We got it from a definition on Noah Webster's Dictionary of eighteen twenty-eight. And you cannot find Moorish Americans nowhere in history whatsoever. So the moors, out of their own manifestation, have branded ourselves as being Moorish Americans. And there are no Moorish Americans according to the contract. All right? So we have to understand this as we're reading. As we're reading the French Protectorate, France never referred to you as being Moorish Americans. The United States of America never referred to you as being Moorish Americans. Your treaties never referred you as being Moorish Americans. So why are we branding ourselves as Moorish Americans? You can only enforce a contract according to the names on the contract. That's the truth. So what's really going on with this French Protectorate? What should we really take away from this? The colonists understand what's called the triple principle. Moors have to learn what's called the triple principle. What's the triple principle? Listen. See who controls the land controls its laws and its wealth. That's the triple principle. You're talking land, laws, wealth, in that order. Act of Algiers now discloses the triple principle. Here it is. The triple principle of the Act of Algiers is what? Sovereignty and independence. What does that mean? Statehood. If you read the Act of Algiers, it talks about states. If you read the Treaty of Madrid, it talks about states. What's the second principle? Integrity of domains is about what? Laws and courts. That's what France is talking about. What's the third one? Economic liberty without any inequality. What is that about? Creation of taxes and revenue. France is adamant about laws, the land, and now getting into wealth. They're doing nothing but checking boxes. So what is the obligation of moors? We have to learn how to get back to our own triple principles. These are triple principles of Moroccan treaties. They're Moorish treaties. And moors are failing on their own. We're delaying our own justice because we just simply don't want to check the boxes. Either because we don't know about these boxes, or we know about the boxes and won't take the time to have a discipline to come back to our own Moroccan treaties. This is Moroccan law you're looking at. If you look at the Charter of the United Nations nineteen forty-five, it's based upon a triple principle. If you look at all the declarations that have come out of the Charter since nineteen forty-five, they're all based upon the triple principle. The Charter of the United Nations is nothing but an extension of Moroccan law. So what's the problem? Moors gotta take the time and get out of followership and get into scholarship. Moors gotta study, and moors have no choice but to check the boxes, because that's international law. What is international law? Your Moroccan treaties. That is the law of the planet. Let's continue with the studies today. All right, so we're gonna open up ANPAC's constitution. Why is this important? Because moors have to understand, we all have an obligation under Article fifteen of Treaty of Madrid to do what? Choose. ANPAC has chosen to come back, to return to the entire submission of the laws of the empire. Then we decided to consent to a Moroccan government. That's exactly what we did. It all starts with a constitution, three branches of government. You must vote for your elected officials. You have no choice in order to have what's called competent authority. Go back and look at the Vienna Convention of nineteen sixty-nine, Articles One and Two, they go right into what? What's Article One? Talks about states, can only enforce treaties. Article Two does what? It defines the status of those officials of the state. What is the definition of competent authority? Those are the competent ones of that state government, elected officials. That's the definition of competent. They define it. We have no choice but to be competent moors. Not just moors with a lot of Moorish science knowledge. What matters in international law? Treaties. And you cannot enforce a treaty unless you're enforcing that treaty through your ratification depository through your state. And therefore, if you got a state, you've got what? Competent authority overseeing said state. Now you have full powers. So moors gotta get back, check these boxes. Let me ask you a question. Do the moors have states? Yes or no? There's a high probability. The answer is what? No. Question. Do the moors have ratified law of their states? There's an overwhelming probability. The answer is what? No. Next question. Do the moors have equal economics from our foreign contracts? What I mean there, how we've been able to enforce the Kadi? How we've been able to get into trade and commerce with these foreigners who are occupying our land according to the treaties? According to the treaties, we must get into what? Amity and commerce. Have we done that? Have the moors been able to collect commerce from the foreigners yet? More than likely, the answer is no. Wait a minute. Why not? Because we're stateless, and only moors who have a state can enforce the treaties. Then eventually do what? So therefore, once you enforce the treaties, what's the first thing that happens? See who controls the land? What's the land? What is that? That's statehood. You get into statehood. You're at varying stages of advancement. First step you gotta do is get back to the land. The land is the state. Then you do what next? Now you start to control the laws. How do you control the laws? That's the interior domain. That's the law. That's the courts. See why France is coming out the courts? After that, last but not least, is the wealth. What's the wealth? Economic liberty without any inequality. So if moors can't even check this first box, listen to me, moors. If we don't check the first box of statehood, then we cannot maintain integrity of domains, which is our laws and courts. You got moors out here talking about they putting together writs and affidavits. How are you doing that when you're stateless? Because writs and affidavits comes second. First is the state. Then your writs and affidavits. From who? Counselor Court. Once you solidify Box Number One and Box Number Two, then you get into what? Economics. That's when the Kadi gets to work. That's when you collect taxes and revenue. That's last. What have moors done? They've jumped straight to Number Two. They're trying to maintain integrity of domains, but yet they're stateless, which means we're violating our own Moroccan law, which makes us outlaws because we're not working within the law. This is the problem with moors right now. We're not following the instructions of our own Moroccan treaties. You know what we're doing? We're out here telling the colonists, we wanna enforce your constitution on you. And we're doubling down on state statutes, and the colonies themselves say their state statutes are fraud. Instead of going to Article Three, Section Two, Diversity of State. Diversity of State, two states. Moors don't have a state, how you got diversity of state? Because once you got two states, they got what? A dispute. Any dispute is what? Article twenty, what happens when you got these two disputes? What do you do? You put these down, you pick up what? Treaties. You got four treaties right here. Basic treaties, basic treaties. Seventeen eighty-seven, eighteen thirty-six, eighteen eighty, nineteen oh six, basic treaties. That's what you pick up. This is what all states, all countries, all nations around planet Earth do. This is what they do. They pick up treaties to do what? Deal with the dispute. Moors are absolutely incompetent if we don't understand the basic fundamentals of what? Treaty law. We keep saying enforce this, we're letting the whole world know that we're incompetent. And not just that, we're saying we're enforcing it as Moorish Americans, and there's no Moorish Americans in treaty. And state statutes are fraud. They put that in the Black Law Dictionary. Look up the definition of what's called note or memorandum in the Black Law Dictionary. What does it say? Under statutes of fraud, that's the definition. So what's happening here? The French Protectorates about France taking over and checking these three boxes. Because guess who was checking the three boxes before France? The Americans. Now France is taking over. While the moors are down here doing what? Can't even say, they gotta say no to all these questions. No, no. Which means now you're not enforcing your own triple principle of your Moroccan treaty. Why? Because we're in followership instead of scholarship. Young moors gotta study. What do young moors think to study? International law? If you're studying local state statute, you will lose. You're trying to enforce the Constitution of the United States of America, you will lose. You call yourself a Moorish American, you will lose. Now the French Protectorate. We left off right here, remember? Class Forty-four, okay? So what we're going to do is, we're going to pick it up just as a slight overlap. We're gonna start here, the willingness, okay? We're gonna start here, all right? Now before we do that, who's talking right now? Who do we leave off on? Okay? Just a point of emphasis. Okay? So what we're gonna do, like I said, we're gonna pick it up right in this correspondence right here at the beginning of this paragraph, so we just have a little overlap, all right? Fair enough? Okay? Okay, Mom?
The willingness of the federal government to recognize the protectorate's regulation powers cannot be doubted by the embassy or by the French government. I am convinced that your excellency will find in the foregoing explanations all the paleations you may wish for, and I have no doubt that you will, as has already been done by most of the other powers, agree to forego the benefits of extraterritoriality in the French zone of the Sharifian Empire and accept to place persons subject to American jurisdiction under that of our courts.
All right, so what is France doing as a reminder? France wants what? Control of the courts. Who are they talking to? They're talking about these Americans, the American jurisdiction, American jurisdiction. He wants it now to come under what? What's the key word here? Sharifian Empire. What is the Sharifian Empire? That's the Moroccan Empire. Who are the Moroccans? The moors. So American jurisdiction will come under the Sharifian Empire. With this overlay, they call what? The French zone. So they got all kinds of names for the land. France named it what? French zone. The colonists named it what? America. Sidi Mohamed allowed the land to be called America, which the colonies was residing in based upon their jurisdiction, American jurisdiction. It's distinctive from what? Sharifian Empire. And the French zone is distinctive from the Sharifian Empire. Sharifian Empire is distinctive from American jurisdiction. So when moors call themselves what? Moorish Americans, what are you doing? You're combining two jurisdictions. You're conflating the two things. We can't do that. We have to pick which side of the contract we're going to represent. Moorish Americans are third-party interlopers, because their name does not exist in the treaty. The moors created the American called Moorish American. It's a manifestation. The colonists will point this out to you. Where are they getting this from? The treaties. They're not just making up this. The treaties call it what? Sharifian Empire. Act of Algiers, nineteen oh six. Zone, the French zone came from what? That's the French Protectorate, nineteen twelve. France has a French zone because of Sotin let him have it. The American jurisdiction came from what? Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven, when Sidi Mohamed allowed them to be the Americans. The colonies are not just making this stuff up. They're repeating provisions and words and a lot of words out of our Moroccan treaties. So the American jurisdiction, and those under the American jurisdiction, who are they talking about? Citizens of the United States of America, as well as moors that are branded as proteges. All come under what? The courts of who? The French zone. To take over what? Counselor Court. Because the courts control what? Integrity of domain, of the domain. What's happening? That's the second principle. That's what France is asking right now, integrity of domains. Why? Because they secured it through the Treaty of Fadh of nineteen twelve, sovereignty and independence. They're taking over the entire empire's state. Now they're coming right after integrity of domains. What's that? Laws and courts. Right after that, they're talking about what? Wealth. You gotta see what's happening, moors. Let's continue.
Aware of the friendly and reciprocal good and reciprocal goodwill which always presides over the settlement of such questions between our two countries, I cannot but remind once more, in conclusion, your excellency, as Mr. Jussarane did before this in his notes of May or April twenty-second and June tenth last, of the high value my government would attach to the government's early accession to our request laid before it on August twenty-nine nineteen thirteen.
Okay. Now here comes the United States' response to France. Okay, Mom? So what date are we at?
July twenty-four nineteen fourteen, Washington. Sir, I beg to acknowledge the receipt of your note of July sixteen in reply to that of the Department under date of February thirteen nineteen fourteen, relative to the recognition by the government of the United States of the French Protectorate in Morocco and the desire of this government for the settlement of certain questions affecting American citizens and American proteges and their rights in that country.
Stop. So what rights? Listen. So this is who? Department of State. It's the United States of America talking. They're telling the moors and telling everybody around the world right here, they're admitting what? They're admitting what? That's right. So they're admitting what? What France is doing is affecting who? American citizens and, and American proteges. Wait, if moors are citizens of the United States of America, then why does the United States keep making this distinction? Why do they keep calling themselves the American citizens and calling you American proteges? It's because proteges are the property of the Americans. The moors are the property of Americans. I'm gonna keep saying this, it's redundant. The ICJ backed this up in nineteen fifty-two. But the United States is letting you know, the moors are not citizens of the United States of America. They're just the protected party. They're the asset of the Americans. And watch how they end it. And their rights in that country, that country. What country are they talking about? Morocco. So then the American citizens and American proteges are really in the country of what? Morocco. This is the United States talking. Let's continue.
The American government has assured the government of the French Republic of its favorable disposition towards the reform which the French Protectorate proposes and will give the remarks contained in your note referred to above careful consideration.
Okay, that's the end of that. Short correspondence from the United States this time, right? All right. Here comes the French Ambassador of the Secretary of State. Here comes France now with their response. What's the date?
November fourth nineteen fourteen.
Okay, let's continue.
Mr. Secretary of State, in continuation of previous communications, last being the letter of July sixteen last from the Charged Affairs of France, relative to the claims in Morocco preferred by the federal government, which it thought had better be settled before extraterritorial rights were relinquished, I had the honor...
Okay, let's stop right here. This is France talking. What is France saying? Listen. France says what? There are some claims in Morocco. Who are they talking to? United States of America? Claims in Morocco? You gotta see how France, United States of America keeps referring to in Morocco. The United States of America is in Morocco. The United States, as a municipal corporation and based in international law, is called an international organization proper, is in Morocco. Each one of the so-called fifty states, they're really not states, they're corporations, which means they're organs of the international organization known as the United States proper, is what? They're all in Morocco. Why am I pointing this out? Because moors up in and followership instead of scholarship, moors keep saying at Morocco, at Morocco. It's not at Morocco. The treaties are specific. The language is specific. In Morocco. Everyone's in Morocco. The treaties are written in Morocco. Their residency is in Morocco. Moors domicile in Morocco. Everything is in Morocco. That's what the treaties say. Look at the Treaty of Madrid, eighteen eighty, it says what? Protections in Morocco. ICJ refers to what? The United States of America's nationals in Morocco. It's in Morocco. Moors gotta understand it's based upon their vernacular. We gotta get back to the treaties. We gotta keep it simple, moors. We continue to create these manifestations of what we want the words to be. We gotta stick to the strict sense of contracts. Let's continue.
To inform your excellency that the result of the latest of the latest inquiries prescribed by my government concerning those claims has just been made known to me, and I deem it my duty to impart it to you as follows.
Okay, keep in mind, this is France talking.
First, in regard to the Wurkskall case, it appears from the investigation that the claim formulated in this memorandum of May seventh last by the representative of the United States at Tangier, that it was settled as early as the following month of June. The deeds of sale were straightened out at that time.
Okay, so France is going down the list once again. Why are they doing this? Because the United States is doing what? Procrastinating. So France is trying to appease them. Okay, man, let's go down this list. We're checking things off. Some of this stuff is just erroneous, some of it has merit. Let's go down the quick list. Continue.
On the other hand, as to Mr. Wurkskall's being given possession by his common-law native vendor, the case is one that involves Mr. Wurkskall and his vendor on one side and the German agent on the other. Until lately, it was for the nation from whom Mr. Wurkskall held his rights to sue for the execution of the judgment rendered against his opponent, the German agent, before the Counselor Court of that nationality at Casablanca. And the protectorate authorities were quite ready to facilitate when the time came, the formalities required to enable the vendor, provided, of course, that he had previously secured an ex quo de quatuor of the appellate judgment to give possession to Mr. Wurkskall.
Okay, so what's important here to understand? They're talking about what? Counselor Courts. Don't let the United States of America fool you, they know all about Counselor Courts. And you see how now they're utilizing Counselor Courts. When people have disputes, what do you do when you have a dispute with someone? You take it to court. That's the remedy. And all the foreigners know, you utilize Counselor Court when it's state-on-state dispute. When you're arguing over foreign lands or the state-on-state disputes, you take it to Counselor Court. Let's continue.
The war declared by Germany on France, having brought German proteges under the operation of the common law, the execution of the judgment is now a matter for the local authority alone, to which the party concerned need only apply for a prompt and final settlement of his case.
Okay, let's stop right here. Keep in mind, what year are we in? Why do I keep pointing out the year nineteen fourteen? Why do I keep saying, what year are we in? What happened in nineteen fourteen? What happened in nineteen fourteen? World War One jumped off, right? World War One. So this is, so listen to France. The war declared by Germany on France. Having brought Germany proteges. Under the operation of the common law. The execution of judgment is now a matter for the local authority alone. To which the part concerned need only apply for a prompt and final settlement of his case. You gotta understand something. Even Germany. Had proteges. You don't remember now? The signatory powers, which are Christian powers, European powers who signed the Act of Algiers of nineteen oh six. They had Moors all around the world, there's Moors all around the world, especially in Europe. Who've been what? Ostracized, right, they've been ran out of their governments everywhere. So Germany had proteges as well. All the European powers have Moors in their territories. That must be understood, it's just not right here in northwest of Mexico, it's all around the world, the Moors have been. Subjugated. Colonized. All around the world. Let's continue.
Second, in regard to the vacuum oil company's claim touching some land at purchased. It purchased from Juan Ben Saúl de. And which it is said the Moors authorities will not allow to be sold because of the land being Habu property.
Let's stop right there. We talked about this, this is Article sixty three of the Act of Algiers. Knows how the Congress keep pointing this out, even France. Point this out, United States of America keeps pointing this out, what's this about, this Habu properties? That, that's Moors land and Moors buildings. That the colonists are occupying now, you gotta understand, to this very day. We're now February twenty twenty two, and the Congress are still occupying Moors Habu properties. And building, what's the property, the land? How are they claiming it, they're claiming it on the Admiralty Law, feudalism, capitulation. Let's start right here again.
The Legation of the United States declared in a memorandum on the case. That it could not consider any settlement bearing on Habu property. To be applicable to its citizens and proteges before the forms required by Article sixty three. Of the Act of Algiers has been complied with.
So what's happening, France say, look man, there's nothing I can do about it. The treaty is specific. If a colonist has access to Habu property, they can't keep it without the permission of a Moors government. That's what Moors gotta understand, this is nineteen fourteen. Don't let the colonists fool you into thinking that you can't get access to your Moors buildings because they already know. Moors land and Moors buildings are not deed hit to colonists, that's what you gotta take away from this. That's why France is telling, hey, there's nothing we can do, man, some lands are just off limits. Let's continue.
But in the opinion of the government of the Republic, the treaties of eighteen eighty and nineteen oh six. Could not bar the Sharifian government from amending or perfecting thereafter. The laws and regulations existing at the time of the signature of those treaties.
Stop, this is an important sentence to understand. Very important sentence to understand. After the Act of Algiers of nineteen oh six was fully ratified. And deposited. By the signatory powers alone with the Sultan of Morocco. After the fact. Now the United States. Not to confuse United States of America, is looking at that treaty saying, we didn't have enough specific language in here. That gives us any rights, that the Moors got all kind of rights, unlimited rights. That the Khadi can hold up the transfer of the sale of properties. There's not enough specific language, listen. But in the opinion of the government of the Republic. The treaties of eighteen eighty and nineteen oh six could not bar the Sharifian government. From amending or perfecting thereafter. The laws and regulations existing at the time of the signature of those treaties. See, they can't bar the Khadi, what's happening? Let's, let's, let's bring it down to layman terms. As the Moors start to ratify their states. And we started now how it's called our domestic or internal law of our states. We create the law, the legislation that now determines timeframes, et cetera. What is going to be the regulations on how we deal with the colonists in each one of our territories. The colonists are claiming fifty territories within the Moroccan Empire, come out the United States is claiming fifty territories. As Moors take over those fifty territories, they have more state governments. Each one of those state governments now has to ratify internal law of each state and enforce that law. And they're pointing out right here. Even though the treaty was signed after that, the Moroccans can still make laws. That control the destiny of any foreigners in Morocco. That's what you gotta understand.
Article sixty three cited by. The Legation of the United States can hardly be invoked in this particular case. Since it deals with the examination of titles to Habu property occupied under certain conditions by foreigners. In nineteen oh six, and the present case is that of land purchased in nineteen thirteen. By the vacuum oil company, upon which there seems to lie certain Habu rights.
So what's the Habu rights? Moors rights, what's the Moors rights? Those are Moors properties, land, and buildings. Don't let the United States of America fool you, they know exactly which buildings belong to Moors, they know exactly what lands are off limits that they can't hold a deed to. They can't occupy, they can't hold the properties in designated Moors lands or buildings, they know that. However, can Moors allow them to rent it and occupy? Yes, with a contract. Let's continue.
It can hardly be doubted under the circumstances that the case in dispute is that of a land transaction. Which if it does partially or wholly concern the Habu administration. Must be settled with proper regard to the existing regulations governing Habu cases. The protectorate government has nevertheless asked the Habu Department to institute a thorough investigation of the case. And Legation of the United States has been so informed.
Okay, so France is now going to talk to the Habu Department. That's one of the departments of a Moors state government. That's dealing with your Khadi, et cetera, okay?
As to the various other questions, most of them of very little account. Loss of an ox in nineteen eleven, the Benetouille case which can only be settled in accordance with the existing law theft. The existence of which is not admitted, suppose to have been committed to the detriment of an American citizen. A money changer by trade bearing the name of Mohammed bin Ali, bags of sugar. Ten in number lost at La Rashe, that is to say in the Spanish zone, et cetera. The acting agent and consul general of France at Tangier. Has opened negotiations with the representative of the United States in that city. With a view to reaching the earliest possible friendly settlement of these few questions.
Okay, so France is just checking boxes, frivolous stuff, they're just like, okay man, let, let's talk about it and get this past us. Let's continue.
The government of the Republic would fain believe that on the strength of the foregoing statements. Which added to those previously submitted are sufficient proof of the sincere readiness. Of the French authorities to bring without delay all these cases to a legitimate termination. The government of the United States will kindly, as it has repeatedly and lastly on June twen- July twenty four. Last intimated to the embassy. Make a favorable answer to the requests I have had the honor to present as early as last year. And to the effect that the government of the United States agrees, as has already been done by several European governments. To the abrogation so far as it is concerned of the capitulations in Morocco. Wherever the government of the Republic has organized French courts.
Okay, so what's happening? Gotta really catch what's happening here too, now, we've gotten to the end now, just to let you know, we're at the end of the reading. Of the French Protectorate nineteen thirteen, alright? We're still in the year nineteen fourteen, they're having correspondence, what's happening here though? Now, France has asked the United States to do what? Relinquish extraterritorial jurisdiction. But then in the end right here of this particular correspondence, now France says what? Also capitulations. In Morocco. So now, you gotta understand, there's two separate things going on here, extraterritorial jurisdiction. And then there's the matter of what's called capitulations. Two separate types of jurisdiction. So France now starting to talk about capitulations as well, where? And what they call the, and deal with it in the French courts of the French Zone. See, France is checking boxes. You gotta understand what's happening. Okay, now that we're at the end, let's take a little bit, take a little bit of, uh, time to look at some history, okay? So what's happening here? Alright. How did the French Protectorate come to be of nineteen thirteen? Well, some people say, well, because of Treaty of Fairs nineteen twelve, well, it didn't necessarily start there. All this protectorates talk started where? Eighteen eighty. Protections in Morocco, proteges. Started in eighteen eighty, this is the official record, when the colonists were saying, yeah, we, we officially ran the Moors out of governments now. Started in eighteen eighty, in that treaty. You gotta understand what's happening here. Okay, what, let's, let's back up from eighteen eighty, what happened before eighteen eighty? So, the Civil War started off what? Eighteen sixties, right, eighteen sixty one, Civil War, let's, quick timeline. Lincoln gets killed in sixty five. Why? Cause he wanted to get Moors back what? Forty acres in the mule. But at the same time, he created what's called the, uh. Homestead Act of eighteen sixty two, follow me. Eighteen sixty two Homestead Act. Gave the colonists one hundred and sixty acres. He came out the Emancipation Proclamation to give the Moors forty acres, and they still killed them. What else happened in the sixties? Fourteenth Amendment, eighteen sixty eight. Moors got thrown into a person status. Then we had what? Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy. That put Moors what? As the protective party of the United States of America, proper. What happened in eighteen seventy? After Congress, eight, eighteen seventy one, eighteen seventy one, after Congress eighteen seventy one, what happened? They established the United States. They made everybody dead on paper in the Admiralty Law. So in eighteen seventy one, after Congress. Created a brand new international organization called a municipal corporation. Nine years later. This treaty comes out. Which now talked about the protections of who? Moors. And what happens in this treaty, what is it saying in this treaty? Okay. Now the Sultans put specific language in place. What specific language they put in place? Article fifteen. And in Article fifteen, as it relates to, relates to, listen to me more, as it relates to what? The protege status, subject status. This second paragraph says, any colonial state. Gets to hold on to Moors if the Moors are still naturalized. Why? Because Moors have to check the box of the first paragraph, paragraph one, paragraph two. This is that choose between, choose between. And when you don't choose, that means you've made a choice by what's called acquiescence or tacit acquiescence to remain naturalized. And you know more naturalized citizens of the United States of America? Moors Americans, why do I say that? Why are Moors Americans still naturalized citizens? Because we have not ratified the states. And because we're not Americans. You gotta understand, where is all this French Protectorate of nineteen thirteen, we're going backwards now, what's happening? Because America became the, the protectorate party. Keeping in mind, in the seventeen seventy four, let's go back further, seventeen seventy four, what happened? The Congress, the thirteen Congress did what? They proclaimed at that time, they wanted their independence from Britain. They start to dissolve their charters that they had at the time with Great Britain. For so, from seventeen seventy four until seventeen seventy six. They were trying to figure out how they're gonna put together a government, and they officially proclaimed their independence what? Seventeen seventy six. Seventeen seventy six. And from there, they start to draft their own independent constitutions. That's where you get the Articles Confederations, parts one and two. Well, who was helping them the whole time? France and Moors. We protected them, the colonists are the per- the original proteges. I'll say it again, the thirteen colonies and the colonists. Are the original proteges, i.e. the refugees in Morocco. Who were then after seventeen seventy four seeking what? Asylum in Morocco away from Great Britain. You gotta understand the history here. So now we move up to eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, let these Moors get back to their government, okay? Then what happens? Nineteen oh six, Act of Algiers. When they're talking about twenty six years later, another treaty comes out, a Moroccan treaty. That still classifies Moors as Moors subjects, but it also has this called word competent authority, if you read the treaty, when, which we will. Another day, we're gonna go through it. It starts referring to competent Moors versus Moors subjects. So we're building up, right? Then all of a sudden, all of a sudden in nineteen twelve. France signs a treaty with the Sultan. Why does France sign a treaty with the Sultan? Because the European powers still fighting during this time. You found out in nineteen fourteen, World War One, Germany, France, all the Europeans fighting. France had control of the empire. Nineteen twelve. It's about what? What is it about? A protectorate status, it's a protege, protege treaty, for who? The land. The laws, and the wealth. So the treaty itself is like protecting the state of empire, the empire state, listen, but then it goes down to what? What's specific about this? Now you go down to Article six. Article six, the diplomatic and concert agents of France shall be charged with the representation and protections protege of who? Moroccan subjects. If so, juror, more subjects. Moroccan subjects. Okay, nineteen thirteen, now they're talking. Leading up to nineteen fourteen, nineteen thirteen, nineteen fourteen, the French Protectorate, they're talking about what? The Treaty of Fairs nineteen twelve. But this all started eighteen eighty. And they keep talking about Moors, why? Cause Moors is their true asset. Okay, so if France now has jurisdiction of the empire. Then how does that affect Moors today in year twenty twenty two? Okay, let's look at the history. Remember I told you, I'll tell you a little bit more about Germany later on. Germany relinquished. Any claims. In Morocco. Okay, mother, can you read this for me?
Timeline of events in the Empire of Morocco. Germany renounces all rights, titles, and privileges conferred on her by the General Act of Algiers. Of April seven nineteen oh six. And by the Franco-German Agreements of February nine nineteen oh nine. And November four nineteen eleven. All treaties, agreements, arrangements, and contracts concluded by her with the Sharifian Empire. Are regarded as abrogated as a, as from August three nineteen fourteen.
Stop. Where you can find this reference point. Is the Office of the Historian, the United States talks about this on their Office of Historian, if you look it up. Use these words, you copy paste these words, you write these words, put it into Google search, it'll pop right up, okay? So Germany relinquished its jurisdiction. Being rather extraterritorial capitulation. They even said, okay, we're even relinquishing any rights we had to the Act of Algiers of nineteen oh six, they totally got out of Morocco. So you remember France kept talking about Germany was up next to take over Council Court, where Germany came and said, we're out. Why? There was a war going on. So, then Great Britain does what, mother?
Great, Great Britain recognized the French Protectorate on December nineteenth nineteen fourteen.
So Great Britain recognized the French Protectorate. And now, based upon a timeline, now you find out that Great Britain recognized the French Protectorate. And now, based upon a timeline, now you find out that Great Britain recognized the French protectorate as well, nineteen fourteen. Keeping in mind, this is the motherland of who? The original colonists. What did the United States of America do? Mother?
The United States of America and the United States recognized the French protectorate on January fifteenth nineteen seventeen.
So France and the United States had correspondence from nine, January nineteen thirteen, all the way until January nineteen seventeen. Now don't get me wrong, there was a war going on, World War One in the end until nineteen eighteen. However, look how long the United States held out as being the last Christian power in Morocco before they actually recognized France as being a protector. You gotta catch what's going on. France, I mean, the United States of America always stalled, denies, and defends. They procrastinate. How do Moors stop this from happening? Consult court. Issue your orders and judgments, and you stop all this procrastination. What else happened? Since we've talked about Germany, let's, let's get a little bit more information about Germany. This is the Office of the Historian, okay? This is papers relating to the foreign relations of the United States. The Paris Peace Conference of nineteen nineteen, Volume thirteen, Section five Morocco, Articles one forty-one to one forty-six, okay? So then I just copy pasted Article one forty-one, and this is the information I, I, I have for you, okay? Just to give you a little bit more information, more detail about Germany, okay? So mother, can you start from here?
From the top?
Yes.
Office of the Historian. Papers relating to the foreign relations of the United States. The Paris Peace Conference nineteen nineteen, Volume thirteen, Section five Morocco, Article one forty-one to one forty-six. Germany renounces all rights, titles, and privileges conferred on her by the General Act of Algiers of April seven nineteen oh six, and by the Franco-German Agreements of February nine nineteen oh nine, and November four nineteen eleven. All treaties, agreements, arrangements, and contracts concluded by her with the Sharifian Empire are regarded as abrogated as from August three nineteen fourteen. In no case can Germany take advantage of these instruments, and she undertakes not to intervene in any way in negotiations relating to Morocco, which may take place between France and the other powers. Germany having recognized the, Article one forty-two. Germany having recognized the French protectorate in Morocco hereby accepts all the consequences of its establishment, and she renounces the regime of the capitulations therein. This renunciation will take effect as of August three nineteen fourteen.
Okay, so what do we learn from this? Germany set forth a declaration. Relinquishing extraterritorial jurisdiction. Relinquishing what? Capitulations. And relinquishing any right or claim they had to the treaty in Morocco. That's what Germany did, alright? So what happened between, now that Germany's out, remember France kept talking about Germany was gonna be a part of this? Okay, Germany's out now. Automatically, by default, France ended up being the consul court. Because they had that established Treaty of Fairs of nineteen twelve. They ended up having the consul court. Okay? So what's happened? So from nineteen thirteen, nineteen twelve I should say, French Protectorate nineteen twelve, which is the Treaty of Fairs. Then the French Protectorate nineteen thirteen. France is overseeing what? All the courts, all the land, all the wealth, on behalf of who? The Sultan. Okay, so let's fast forward to nineteen fifty-two. Okay, so we left off here. Nineteen thirteen, but in nineteen fourteen. Okay, so they were still talking in nineteen fourteen, all the way up into nineteen seventeen until the United States finally signed. So then, France takes the United States of America to court in nineteen fifty. Gets a judgment nineteen fifty-two. After that, what happens? When the United States comes back after that judgment, they relinquish what? Extraterritorial jurisdiction in Morocco. But they did not relinquish capitulation, two separate things. So what happens with the Sultan? The Sultan is now, you've had several regimes of Sultans. The Sultan is now upset. He's like, I'm tired of France. France been running the show since nineteen twelve. Now we're in the nineteen fifties. So what does the Sultan of Morocco do? So in nineteen fifty-six, the Sultan now declares his independence. So he can do what? Get out of France's jurisdiction. Cause even though France had a French zone, they would control the Moroccan empire, and the Sultan really didn't have no say because of that treaty. So the Sultan says, okay, I gotta get out of that treaty. Which treaty? Treaty of Fairs nineteen twelve. How do I get out of it? Okay, I gotta do what? Declare my independence. So here's what happened. Update, mother?
The Sultan regained his independence from France. The Sultan declared his independence on March two nineteen fifty-six. The Sultan and France drafted the French Moroccan Agreement, and it was signed in Paris on March second nineteen fifty-six. On April seventh nineteen fifty-six, the French Republic officially relinquished its French Zone Protectorate in Morocco. The Sultan changed his title to king and established the modern independent state known as the Kingdom of Morocco in Africa. The Kingdom of Morocco became a member state of the United Nations in nineteen fifty-six.
Alright. So that's what Moors gotta take away from this. So the Sultan finally was able to negotiate his own independence. He changed his status to king though. So there's no more Sultans in the Empire of Morocco that's governing the entire vast empire. So now, what do we do now as Moors? Now Moors, according to the Act of Algiers, Chapter seven, gives specific instructions for Moors to do what? We got to put together legislation. Constitutions, ratification, depository. That's Articles one twenty to one twenty-three. Moors gotta follow the instructions. Why? There's no more Sultans. Who has the rights now? States. States have the rights to control each territory within the Moroccan empire. So as Moors start to put together their states in each of the territories, eventually now the Moors will come together as an alliance. And we will reestablish the empire as a whole to have one state. So we may have fifty independent states at first. Then we'll come together as an alliance amongst all the fifty Moors state governments, and we establish the empire under one state. We'll name it whatever we want to name it, Empire Morocco, whatever we want to do at that time. I'm just generalizing right now. It'd be the United States of Morocco, Empire Morocco, whatever we name it, doesn't matter at this time. First, Moors gotta do what? We gotta first to check, check the first box and come back to one independent Moors state per each territory. So you can see, even the Sultan had to establish a state. That's what you gotta take away from this. The Sultan established a constitution and a state. Now, when did he ratify his constitution officially? Nineteen sixty-two. Moors gotta do some research, go back and look at the, at the Kingdom of Morocco's constitution. They changed it four times. The last time they changed it was in the year twenty eleven. So go back and look at the constitutions, and what you're gonna notice in that constitution is that the Kingdom of Morocco refers to itself over and over again that they are what? An organic state. They don't wanna be known as a municipal corporation. They are organic state in the Empire of Morocco. What does that mean? They're a state provincial government within the Moroccan empire. And if there's no more Sultans, there's only state rights. So that's what Moors gotta take away from this. Let's read it. Update, the Sultan regained his independence from France. The Sultan declared his independence on March second nineteen fifty-six. The Sultan and France drafted the French Moroccan Agreement, and it was signed in Paris on March second nineteen fifty-six. On April seventh nineteen fifty-six, the French Republic officially relinquished its French Zone Protectorate in Morocco. The Sultan changed his title to king and established the modern independent state known as the Kingdom of Morocco in Africa. The Kingdom of Morocco became a member state of the United Nations in nineteen fifty-six. So what does that tell Moors? The Charter matters. The Sultan, who's now a king, is a member state. King Morocco is a member of the United Nations. Does that mean Moors have to be a member state of the, of the United Nations? No. We can be non-member states. When should we become a member of the Charter? When we put together all our states and be the Empire of Morocco as one state, one single state, and become a member of the Charter when all the Moors come together with all the independent states. Then we become one state on the record with the United Nations. In the meantime, we're just non-member states. That's what we gotta understand from this. Even the Sultan, who became king, ratified a deposit of constitution. Nineteen sixty-two, it became a member state nineteen fifty-six. You gotta see what's happening here. So if the Sultan who turned king had a state, then what, why do Moors think they don't need states? Think about it. Moors have to get back to their own triple principles. What was the King of Morocco doing when he became a state? You know what he's doing? Following instructions. Even he could not put himself in a position not to follow Moroccan law. Why? Cause treaties are supreme law of the land. And even he had to follow supreme law of the land. That's what Moors gotta take away from this. So now that we understand that even the Sultan who became king had to follow the instructions of Moroccan treaties, then the Moors of Northwest of Mexico, i.e. Morocco, have to follow the instructions as well. Cause even the Sultan turned king could not enforce his own treaties because he had to do what? He had to become a modern independent state. And he had to live up to the Charter as well. Now I'm gonna show you a little bit of history. As we start to wrap up, this is gonna now help to now start to bridge into Class forty-six. So this is the beginning of Class forty-six right now that we're starting. We're gonna start the tip of it right now, cause we, they're now done with the French protectorate. We understand some basics of timeline. If they're all fighting over the protege, who's the protege? The Moor. What makes you a protege? Cause you're stateless. But why are they fighting over you? Because you're the true asset. Let's look at some timelines. Correlation of history and Moors treaties as follows. The Act of Algiers, Act of Algiers is signed by the twelve signatory powers, including the United States of America and Tadjire on April seventh nineteen oh six. Mister Hoffman Philip addresses the United States, better known as an international organization. Moors refer to the United States as being a municipal corporation, in which they are. But on an international level, they're called an international organization. That is the term that Moors have to understand. When you refer to the United States, they are an international organization. Moors gotta do some research on that. So Mister Hoffman Philip addresses the United States, better known as an international organization. So the United States is an international organization about the status of Moors and the supreme law of the empire in the Act of Algiers of August third nineteen oh six. What's happening? So August third nineteen oh six, this guy Philip Hoffman, who represents the United States of America, is talking to the United States. But he's talking to the United States about what? About what took place about the Act of Algiers. Cause the United States has signed it on April seventh. Philip Hoffman now is talking to the United States. Remember now, when they signed it, they signed it as the United States of America. Remember that. When they first signed the Act of Algiers of nineteen oh six, they signed it as the United States of America, in good faith. But now they have to bring it back and do what? Ratify and deposit through what? The United States organization. So this conversation was taking place August third nineteen oh six, from this gentleman Hoffman Philip. About what? About the United States of Ameri, the United States of America signed a treaty on April seventh nineteen oh six. So look at the timeframe, April. Now we're talking August of the same year. Right? So what happens? The United States Senate ratified the active, the act. So we're talking about the act. What's the act? Act of Algiers. The act is referred to as the act sometimes. On December twelfth nineteen oh six. I'm gonna show you some timelines. Be patient with it. The United States executive, who is that? The president, after the Senate ratified it, now the president signs it into law. This is what Moors gotta understand. Through your three branches of government, you gotta learn it. The Senate, which is your legislative branch of your Moroccan government, looks, puts together a bill. They send it to the executive branch, they sign it into law. So what happened? The United States executive, the president, ratified the act on December fourth nineteen oh six. Fourteenth, I should say. Then the United States deposited the act at, on December thirty-first nineteen oh six. Why am I pointing this out? Cause Moors gotta see that the United States of America is following the instructions. Why? Act of Algiers. Nineteen oh six, Chapter seven, Articles one twenty to one twenty-three says you must do what? Ratify and deposit. Have Moors done that? There's a high probability of Moors haven't done this. AIPAC's done it, yes. That's why we're teaching the course. You can't be a stateless Moor, teaching stateless Moors about international law of statehood if you're still stateless yourself. So AIPAC is teaching about statehood because we're not stateless. We have an obligation as Moors to help other Moors to help them to understand your own Moroccan treaties. And the Moroccan treaty say you must ratify and deposit. Have Moors done that? There's a high probability. Answer is no. The twelve Christian powers continued to fight over Morocco's jurisdiction from approximately nineteen hundred to nineteen forty-five, resulting in World War One and World War Two. I'm just trying to show you a little bit of timeline of what's happening here. The colonists are always fighting each other. And they're always fighting over Moroccan land. They wanna hold on to jurisdiction and the resources of Moors all around planet Earth. They're always fighting each other. They're always in scourge of war. Now, when we get into Class forty-six, we're gonna take a look at this date right here. Give Moors a little bit of homework. I want Moors to look at this date of the treaty. April seventh nineteen oh six. Act of Algiers. Then I want you to recognize the date of August third nineteen oh six. What happened with this guy by the name of Hoffman Philip? In nineteen oh six, in August. Give Moors a little homework before Class forty-six. I want you to figure out who is this Hoffman Philip of August third nineteen oh six? And in Class forty-six, we're gonna talk about the correlation of what took place between this date, this date. this date, and these dates. December twelfth, December fourteenth, and December thirty-first. So that's your homework, Moors, for Class forty-six to prepare. So the dates you're looking at, Act of Algiers, April seventh, when the United States of America signed it. And then the United States, the United States started talking about it in August third nineteen oh six, so your homework is to figure out what happened in August third nineteen oh six when this gentleman was talking about, who represents the United States of America. That's your homework. Which is now gonna let you understand after August, why they then started ratifying the United States in December twelfth, fourteenth, and thirty-first. And I'm gonna show y'all something that your leader guys haven't been telling you as a correlation. Alright? So, as we get ready to close, what's happening? Moors have to start studying their own treaties. I'm telling you, Moors, the answer to the test is putting the Constitution of the United States of America down. Picking up your constitution, ratifying your constitution. That's the answer to the test. Once you do that, then what? Then you ratify and deposit the rest of the treaties. And you make them one. You make them one. That's what happens. Once you do that, what's the next step? You do what? You deposit with who? The Secretary of the United Nations Charter. Once you do that, you immediately start to now enforce your constitution and your treaties, your declarations, your conventions, as well as your internal domestic law that you have ratified that has specifics on how you deal with any foreigners that's in Morocco that's residing in your territory of your latitude, longitude, or your Moor state government. When you're doing that, at the same time, you wanna now convert these nationality cards that were not issued by a Moor state government. You wanna now dispose of these and have your state issue you your public state credentials that are on the record of what they call public law. Because right now, Moors got what you call private interest, this is your private interest law, that's your divine. When you get to statehood, that's gonna become your public law of your state. It becomes a divine, then national movement. Then it has credibility then. You're entitled to your nationality, all the declarations tell you, you're entitled to your nationality. But it's a divine and national movement. You can turn this misunderstanding, this misconception, and these shortcuts, because this is not entire, this is taking shortcuts. You can turn this into a public instrument, a public law instrument of your state that will stand up in any international court on planet Earth, including your own Conseil Court. That's what Moors gotta understand. We gotta stop being in fellowship and get into scholarship. Until then, well, you're just Aboriginal Americans. Until then, you're just Moorish Americans. Why do I say that? You got a right to your own self-determination. If you determine that you're a Moorish American, I'm okay with that, but guess what? That has legal ramifications. Because that's not who you are. You are a Moor. You're a Moroccan of Morocco. And the treaties are specific. You have to come back to the entire submission of the laws of the empire and consent to a Moroccan government. And that Moroccan government better have competent authority. What's competent authority? Elected officials that can prove on the record their government credentials came from their state. Because their state has a constitution, flag, seal, oath and allegiance to said constitution. They have a public inauguration, then they've ratified the constitution, ratified treaties, ratified conventions, ratified all the charters, declarations, deposited with the United Nations Charter. Now this is public law. This lawful. This is your private interest, divine. It must now become national movement. We gotta choose. I am back. Islam.